Call this meeting of the Cardinalsville City Council to order. If you'll please stand with me for our invocation and pledge. And tonight I'll ask for a moment of silent reflection during this for a moment. How about this, pause a little bit for a moment of silence. Thank you. Do we have a pledge?
Pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
That's why I didn't pray, I thought I couldn't even tell you to be quiet. Very well. Ms. Henry, the roll please.
Carrie Hug, Ward 1.
Here.
Jay Steph, Ward 2.
Here.
Louis Ponsmire, Ward 3.
Here.
Liz Amy Daniel, Ward 4. Diane Tate, Ward 5.
Here.
Lori Pruitt, Ward 6.
Thank you Catherine. Our first order of business is the approval of our council meeting minutes from our October 17th meeting. And council, you've had these well in advance of tonight, had an opportunity to look those over. The chair will entertain any edits, corrections, or motions.
Mayor, I didn't see any corrections or additions. Make a motion to approve.
Okay. A motion to second, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
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 The minutes are approved unanimously. We have a series of public hearings to start us off tonight. Mr. Manino, if you'll get that going forth. First one is file Z-13-05.
Thank you Mayor and council. All three of the cases, the planning commission cases on the agenda tonight are second readings and there are no additions or changes since the first reading. The first one was an application by John Adams at 217 Casco Road, rezoning from MF-14 apartment zoning to the office of commercial zoning. Planning commission did recommend approval of that application.
Any questions for Mr. Manino at this time?
Mr. Manino, I talked to Mr. Adams a minute before we came in tonight and are you coordinating the fire department's comments or is that strictly between the applicant and the fire department?
And our building official, yes. It can come through our office, but the fire marshal has spoke directly to the applicant and we are aware of what the concerns were, if there were concerns and what would be necessary for them to bring it up to court.
Any other questions for Randy at this point? Thank you Randy, I guess a little bit of carpet for the horse. Would a motion, if we get to that point, would that be to include the condition that was brought up to court or is that already included?
No, that is already included. That is actually handled separately from the original items. Staff takes care of that during the building permit process. They just like to make applicants aware that that is an issue so they're not surprised about them trying to help them out planning their development.
Thank you, Mr. Love. Now open up a public hearing relative to case Z-13-05. Anybody wishing to step forward and speak for or against may do so at this time. And if you... Sure. And again, since you're a veteran, your name and your address for our...
John Adams at 100 Tanglewood Drive in City. I talked to Diane just a few minutes ago. I have talked with the fire marshal and the only things remaining are to install some interconnected alarms, which we have. We just have to put them up and waiting for this approval. And we have to install an extinguisher that is monitored or checked once a year, which we're in the process. So that was all that was left to be done and we're taking care of that.
Thank you.
John, may I ask a question? Tell me about the clients whom, with the clients whom you will serve. Tell me who they are, what kind of person.
It is a church affiliated group of men. There are a couple of the pastor and there is someone who lives in the house who monitors and takes care of the men that live there or people that have been down on the luck or had problems and this is, I don't really call it a halfway house because we don't have some of the same situations that they have there, but a similar type situation that gives them a stable place to live, this church arena, so they go to church on Wednesdays and Sundays and have that type of atmosphere while they are there. And we have been very pleased with them and then we found that we needed this ordinance changed was the reason we asked for this. But it's been a very good group there and so we have gone into this extra effort to keep them there.
Well, I thank you for doing it.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to step forward and speak for or against in this public hearing for file Z-13-05? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. The council, now in your hands, do what you wish.
Well Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve. Will you say?
Second.
Motion to second, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next time, please Randy.
Thank you again Mayor and council. This request actually entails two public hearings, annexation and the zoning for this particular piece of property or two properties. This is Shaw Industries Group application for 5.92 acres located at Dr. Ferry, Old Mill Road. The reason we included the corner lot, the Renaissance Bank, is it would create an unincorporated island if the larger tract was annexed, leaving that particular piece out. So in order to correct that, they came in as part of the application. With that, planning commission did recommend approval of this annexation and rezoning to the OC zoning district with no conditions.
Questions for Randy at this time?
Randy, I don't see it in our packet tonight, but the other one that would leave a donut, is that Walnut Grove Inc. that we'll see, is that?
I don't have the actual packet, I can pull out the file.
No, that's okay.
I believe the Walnut Grove plantation is the title holder of the larger tract and the smaller tract with the bank on it is owned by the bank. They're actually the title.
Anything else for Randy at this time? Thank you Randy. And I'll open up a public hearing for the zoning portion of this request, AZ-13-03. Anybody wishing to step forward and speak for or against may do so at this time. And seeing none, I'll close the zoning hearing relative to that file. I'll open up a public hearing for the annexation portion of this request, AZ-13-03. And if anybody would like to come forward and speak for or against, they may do so at this time. And seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Now council, it is up to you, the first item that we take up relative to AZ-13-03 is the annexation portion of this request.
Motion to approve that annexation.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. And the zoning portion of that request is now up for discussion or vote.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Mayor, we do have some Shaw Industries representatives here tonight. It's a good time to tell them how appreciative we are. I spoke to them before the meeting started, but we absolutely do appreciate all the Shaw has meant to this city.
Absolutely. Thank you very much. We appreciate the hours, the tolls, the community, the security, the operators, and the... Thank you. Next item is file SU-13-05. Randy?
Thank you again Mayor and council. This particular request is for a use permit at 310 North Tennessee Street in our existing zoning ordinance in the multiple use, which is a commercial zoning category. We allow certain types of use with a special use permit. It has to go through a little bit more scrutiny and review. With that, the applicant is applying for a farm facility to be run out of the existing business at that particular location. With that, we did have comments back from the police department, a little bit concerned about vehicle storage at this location. The applicant did explain to the planning commission they would have no outside storage in relation to their proposed business expansion. And with that, planning commission did recommend approval with the condition that there be no outside storage associated with this.
Thank you. And I'll open up a public hearing relative to SU-13-05. Anybody wishing to step forward and speak for or against may do so at this time. And your name and address for the clerk, please.
This is Jay Fraser, 34 Cobblestone Drive. I'm just gonna let you know, there's not gonna be anything outside, no cars, no lawn mowers, anything you'd kind of typically associate with a pawn shop. It's just to extend our business practices with the gun, the gun set. So aesthetically, everything's gonna be the same, only gonna be a little bit different on the inside.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak for or against may do so at this time. And seeing none, I'll close the public hearing relative to SU-13-05 and bring it up to council for consideration.
Motion to approve.
And with that motion to approve, I'll let you all wrestle over who made the motion. I believe that motion's gonna be to include the condition for...
Yeah. With the condition that...
Second.
That's assuming that you made the motion.
Second.
We got a second, alright? We have a motion to second, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item, Mr. Manino, capital improvement element.
I promise this is my last agenda, I believe it. This particular request is for a resolution and to have corresponding public hearing with that. As you're aware, back in 2006, the city adopted an impact fee ordinance and we put impact fees out there for a few years. With that, there was a change in the economy. Based on that, the council decided to keep the impact fee ordinance in place, but it adjusted the fee amounts for those different uses. With that, adjusted them all down to zero. So technically, no one's paying an actual impact fee for new building permits in the city. However, with the ordinance still in place, we are required by the state to comply with their guidelines. Their guidelines require us to annually re-adopt our capital improvement element of the comprehensive plan, which includes a financial statement of the impact fees. Financial statement included in your package shows all the fees being zeroed out based on the last budget year. All the amounts were encumbered, if they weren't encumbered in such a timeframe, they would have actually been returned, but all the amounts had been spent and placed into certain accounts to get us in compliance. And with that, we do recommend approval, recommend that you approve this transmittment resolution so we can submit this to the Department of Community Affairs and the Regional Commission. It will follow with a, another agenda item. Once they review it, there's a 30-day time period for public comment or regional comment and after that, we will place the final document on the agenda for your approval.
Yes, this has to be part of a...
Any questions for Randy at this time? Thank you. I will open up a public hearing for the capital improvement element annual update. Anybody wishing to step forward and speak about that may do so at this time. And seeing none, I will close the public hearing and present it to council for vote or their consideration.
I'd like to offer the motion that we approved the resolution, but the impact fees.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. The next item is you, Sam.
Yes. Quick one. Mr. Rance, I think that is probably Sam lost out, the place is down there. I think that, go back, go back, go back to the... This is the deep end of the resolution.
Discussion, if not a motion, would be in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. We have a couple of ordinances tonight. Chief McCann, if you'll get us started, please.
Mayor and council, this is a request for the council to approve an ordinance regarding the sale, distribution, transportation, possession of synthetic marijuana. It strengthens the state law and it's a matter of public health, so I'm requesting an emergency brief.
Okay. Any discussion on this item? If you would, just clarify exactly what this ordinance is and what it does, please.
Synthetic marijuana, oftentimes the manufacturers are out of this country in China and if the legislature creates a law against the synthetic marijuana, they'll change the molecular structure of the synthetic marijuana, which gives it a loophole. We're requesting that all synthetic marijuana be outlawed here in the city of Cardinalsville.
And this does shadow our, is it the same piece that the county had recently...
It does. The county passed the ordinance probably six weeks, two months ago. City attorney has looked at the ordinance and approved it.
Any other questions, council, or discussion? And again, we are considering this. Typically ordinances take two readings when we've been declared emergency and it's been requested at this time, so if council is of the mind, they can go ahead and approve that on this first reading on emergency basis for public health purposes.
Chief, if we pass this tonight, what will the process be for any place that might have this sell?
The process will be, we'll serve notice to each establishment that sells the synthetic marijuana. Give them an opportunity to dispose of their product and in a specific, say a week or so, to dispose of it. If they don't, we'll go into the city and make cases. But we'll give them the chance to dispose of it prior to doing that.
We talked about a lot of this during the work session. Something that just came to my mind that we did not discuss, does this change if someone has this in their car? I know marijuana in the car, but if they have this in their car versus, or does this just cover the means?
No, it covers if they have it in the possession of their car and we'll make a case on that through the city ordinance.
Any other discussion? Thank you Chief.
Thank you.
Any discussion, if not a motion, would be in order.
Mayor, I'd like to recommend that we do pass this on an emergency basis as a public health issue for this city and make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to second, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. I do want to thank Chief McCann along with Captain Major and Captain Chief with the Joint Drug Task Force for being on the front end. I know that Barto is one of the first, if not the first, community to strengthen, fill in the gap from where state law kind of was flawed and so I think it's a good decision to go ahead and get it passed and we appreciate your ongoing efforts in completing this ordinance here and I'd like to mention this. Thank you. Next item is amendment to the utility fees ordinance. Mr. Porter?
Yes, Mayor and council, this amendment will add a 2.5% convenience fee. We discussed this during the budget process. The city's been paying this for a number of years. We pay about $10,000 a month and as part of a cost and some customers that pay their credit card, pay their utility bills and other bills by credit card, the city has been paying those fees for a number of years and I recommend that we pass on those fees. The customer does have ability to pay by cash, by check, at no cost. The new utility bills will be rolling out here shortly, in the next week or two. It actually gives them the ability to pay electronically, online, electronic check online. And of course, they can go through their own bank, depending on what the bank may or may not charge. Most banks don't charge them a fee at all, so they do have other options to pay utility in other accounts. Again, this is a first reading ordinance, but we recommend approval at the second reading.
And again, the amount of money that this has cost in the city of Cardinalsville in processing these fees last year was...
Approximately $120,000.
Alright. Any discussion? I don't want to ask that now, but are there any questions?
I just remember when we first started this, we did it as a cost saving measure. I assume that use of credit and debit card payments become so omnipotent that it's no more of a cost saving measure for the city to do this.
Correct. For a number of years, we were only paying 40,000, 50,000 annually. That was the cost, but people over the years continue to do that and the cost has just gone up, but it's been like I said, about $120,000 annual cost.
It's like three times as much as it was when we first started this.
And of course, early on, we never had other options to do that, except one feature we're gonna be adding with our, rolling out the new utility bill, electronic payments, electronic check payments. And we do have, for a number of years, we've allowed people to go through and have a bank draft, so we do have other features available to them. We have a page. Probably within the next 10 days, by the next council meeting for sure. We've gone through a number of iterations with our utility billing company to make changes to bill template and it's finally ready to roll out.
Thank you sir. Any other questions for Dan? Thank you.
Next item, Mayor, would be the renewal of our health insurance for our employees for 2014. We've been with Cigna for, since January 1 of this year. We looked at a couple of options going into the renewal, but Cigna offered renewal at, with no change to the plan, at, really it was about a 7% rate, it come down to 4.6%. With the new Affordable Care Act renewal numbers, we have to make some adjustments into the total out-of-pocket costs that employees will pay. They have already been paying deductible and co-insurance, but under the Affordable Care Act, the, basically their copays if they're going to the doctors have already, are gonna be added to that total. So I recommend the total out-of-pocket cost to go to $5,000, which is a deductible, co-insurance copay on your handout that you have. Basically, it's the third column in there. It'll be a 3.97% rate increase over current year number. That's a very small amount than what we have been paying for the last several years. This is actually for Cigna and really has been a low claim year. Our claims have been down this year over prior years, but I do recommend a renewal with Cigna at the $5,000 out-of-pocket max with them for 2014.
With that 3.97% benefit, we have some political premium money.
Correct. Employee premium, the cop amounts out of the paycheck will remain the same as what we currently have been paying since July.
Okay. Questions? Discussion, comments, or motions? Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. We have the annual assessment for membership to the Northwest Georgia Regional Commission.
This is our membership to the RNC. They do things for us, like the capital improvement element review that, they do value impact items, they do another clearinghouse thing for the political and state government. Our payment to them is based on population. This year it's 19,000, I think it's 10,000, and that requires council approval, vet which are...
Sam, I've got a question. How do they estimate this? Is it census plus a percentage?
Sounds like about a buck a person, doesn't it?
Strictly census number.
It's, yes, right here on the attachment.
But I mean, does that last for...
Population estimates as of July 1st, 2012. That's what we're using for this.
And then it doesn't change to the next census?
I don't know about that. This is 2012.
I think they do, I think, you know, they do annual estimates before the end and then they do the census every 10 years, so probably have a little bit of adjustment.
They do have a little bit of adjustment.
Okay. Any other questions or discussion on this item? If not, a motion's in order.
Since I have the pleasure of representing the city in this commission, I'd like to make, offer the motion that we approved.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Yes, I would like to thank you for handling that on behalf of the city when there are meetings that are up there in Calhoun and I don't feel like going up there, which I never do and you're up there and you're doing a good job presenting, representing the city on that, so I do appreciate that. Next item, Mr. Anderson.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and council, this is, at one of the past closed session meetings, you gave permission to do an offer package for Hamilton State Bank, the purchase of Rightaway for the Leek Mounds Trail. They have accepted that offer, the amount of $6,100 and I recommend city council accept that and pass a resolution for the purchase of this easement.
Mayor, question. Craig, does this, let me see, does this join the easement? The easement that was given to us?
No.
Does this, no, this in the piece that joins that?
Well, there's, no, no ma'am, there's three parcels that the city has to acquire for this Leek Mounds Trail. Parcels one and two was from Walnut Grove Plantation. This parcel three are according on the grants, parcel three, and it is the area that is adjacent to the water wastewater treatment plant.
Thank you.
Any other questions? And if there's no discussion, a motion would be in order. Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? Motion passes four to one. We do have a couple of change orders. Mr. Monax?
Mayor and council, the council approved an agreement with Hill City Utilities for installation of manholes on some of our existing sewer lines for an amount of $28,600. Once the work was underway, some unforeseen conditions were encountered and some defects in the pipe and existing manholes that needed correction. We had the contractor go ahead and do these repairs that resulted in an increase of $12,500. That brings the final adjusted contract amount to $41,100. And one thing I will note, the next two lowest bidders on this original work were in the mid $40,000, so we feel like we got a good deal. We had these problems corrected. It should significantly reduce stormwater infiltration into the sanitary sewer. The water department recommends approval of the final adjustment change order in the amount of $12,500. This will be paid for from the budget item for maintenance and repair of sewers.
Any questions for Ed on this one? A motion to go on?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Continue on Ed.
Council approved an original contract for the water treatment plant valve vault installation project with C and L contractors for an amount of $76,067.50. Once the work was underway and they had the excavation open, we saw the best course to follow was to have them go ahead and do the valve repairs while they had their excavation open. That resulted in an increase of $58,100 to the originally approved contract. That brings a total amount for labor to $134,167.50. We recommend approval of this final adjustment change order in the amount of $58,100. This will be paid for from the budget item for maintenance of the water treatment plant.
Questions, comments, or motions?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Continue on please.
Next item is our asset management software renewal. We use software from Sims Technologies for our asset management. We have an annual software user license renewal fee of $7,545. This item will be paid for from the budget.
Any discussion on this item?
Ed, is this the same amount it was last year? Does it go up?
No, it's, this is the same that we originally contracted.
For a number of years.
This is the first renewal we've had on it.
Make a motion to approve. Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next one, Ed.
The next item is the Center Road 24-inch gravity sewer replacement. The sewer line paralleling Center Road from Rollin Springs Road to the entrance to Hamilton Township is undersized and in need of replacement. We had a replacement project designed, had the project bid out. TJ Lyle and Company, Taylorsville, Georgia, was the low bidder in the amount of $418,255.61. This will be paid for from capacity fees and we recommend approval.
Mr. Current size?
It's a 10-inch sewer.
24.
24. We've upsized the line downstream from it and then the line that was laid upstream from it was laid in a larger size, so this will bring it all together.
Okay. Any other discussion, if not a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you Ed. Thank you, Ed. Porter, you're up next.
Yes, Mayor and council, as part of the Center Road water tank project, we had fiber department run cable out there with Parker Systems at a cost of $65,105.50, and this is at a O3 splosh. This project will serve that tank as well as other future development possibly out in that area. Recommend approval.
You know, Dan, I probably should know this, but I, what will the fiber do to the water tank? I mean, does it mean we're going digital on some?
Well, they do have telemetry equipment out there at all their locations, and we serve, most of them, I'm not sure if we serve 100 percent on some of the locations, but we do serve a number of them, and as well as electric substations, we have fiber out to a number of those locations as well that we serve.
And we'll have to find out.
Okay. Okay, so it's a digital kind of?
Want to climb up to the top and look down in? I want to think about him falling in and swimming around the bank.
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Carry.
Second.
All in favor, the capes saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Come on, Chief Carter, please.
Mayor and council, I bring before you a budget item this evening. This is firefighters are required on an annual basis under NFPA 1582 and also OSHA 1910 to have an annual firefighter physical and firefighter clearance. And that's what we're bringing before you tonight, bring before you SiteMed, which is a specialized company we've actually utilized for the last three years to perform the physicals for the fire department. In addition to this, we'll also have a physician who'll be a consultant on staff that we can turn to for the next year for any issues that we may have dealing with firefighter clearance. If we have someone that is injured, for example, testing them out, make sure that they're safe to return back to serve the citizens of Cartersville. The baseline for the physicals is $18,460. However, once we get done with the baseline testing, there may need to be some additional testing for especially the hazmat team members, so we're asking for an amount up to, not to exceed $19,750. All E-Verify and Save documents are on file. This is a budget item.
Any questions on this item? Not, Sarah, on the camera? Say it. All in favor, the capes saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, chief. Don, you got the next one.
Thank you, Mayor and council. We've got a 10-year-old or 12-year-old large line truck that needs to be rebuilt. We'll, we'll take a truck that's about of this age and rebuild it and get another 10 years of life out of it. And so typically, we retire vehicle after 20, 22 years of service, and we, we get good performance out of it. And so there's two major manufacturers that, that work on the boom portion of the truck that needs to be rebuilt, and these two manufacturers are Terex and Altech. And over the years, we've found that we get the best quality of service and the, and the best workmanship out of the manufacturer of the truck. And so with this in mind, we, this truck is a Terex truck, and we recommend that Terex be awarded the work for the truck, and we have a proposal of $47,978.31, and this is a budgeted item, and we have E-Verify and Save documents.
Okay. Any questions for Don on this item?
Don, at 20 or 22 years, do we surplus through gov.org, or do we, we keep these trucks to, for parts? How do we usually?
No, we, we will typically retire it because we've got the goodie out of it, and, you know, working on the lines, you've got to, the hoses have to be, remain intact, the hydraulics, so we, we just feel like that's a useful life of a truck, and we'll, we'll surplus it and, and sell it.
We actually have used the older one, it comes works, and the fire form, it's used a little longer than you, I guess.
Right. We, our last truck, we, we.
That one doesn't have any goodie.
Yeah. The goodie's about gone.
Any other questions, and if not, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, the capes saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Don. Mr. Sanders.
Thank you, Mayor and council. One of our garbage trucks needs a piece of equipment. The cylinders that operate, the compactor that compacts the trash have, are no longer functional, and we need to buy two new cylinders, and the cost is $6,788.22, and we would like for you to approve that purchase.
Motion to approve.
All in favor, the capes saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thanks, sir. We've got a presentation from our very own Sam Grove of the citizen survey results.
This is a section of the citizen survey that we've performed every two years since 2003. It's used to evaluate citizen perception, quality of life in Cartersville, and city services. Spring of 2013, we sent out 1,200 surveys, received responses from 322 per response rate of approximately 29 percent. Typically, those are 25 to 40 percent. That gives margin of error of plus or minus 5 percent or 100 percent of the survey. This one is about parks and rec, health and wellness. The first slide is on a 100-point scale, the rating of community recreational opportunities, and this is the, this is the 100-point scale. They're all relatively close in terms of, of the rate of 60, 80 percent range. Next slide shows that when they're compared to benchmarks of other cities in the southeast region and in the nation, it goes sort of similar to what other communities are experiencing. Next piece is actually a measure of people who have visited or participated in each of these, used the recreational facility, participated in a recreational program, and at the bottom, visited the neighborhood park or city park, and you see that one looks really high, and that's, that is validated by the, the next slide that shows the, it gives you a relative sense, these are all off the chart in terms of comparison to national norms and southeast, the southern region norms. This is a rating of the quality of each of these city parks, recreation programs, and rec centers that on a 100-point scale, this is about, use this about perception of quality. Again, they're, they're all near 8 percent over the years. And the relative ratings show city parks to be similar to the southern region, the nation, and rec programs and rec centers to be above for those norms. This is community health and wellness, affordable quality of healthcare, affordable quality of food, and preventive health services. On a 100-point scale, it's a, it's a rate of perception of quality of each of these. All in about the 60 percent area. The benchmarks show them all to be similar except for availability of preventive health service, and that is above the southern region. Next slide is rating of quality of health and wellness services. These have been rated since '07, and they're all around the 60 percent area. Ranking is normal on those, shows those to be similar in the nation, in the southern region. That's all I've got on this section, and we'll bring you on next time.
And again, if you want any more information on that citizen survey, it's on our website, cityofcartersville.org. There are links on both the right and the left side of the page, as Rebecca would remind me, so. Anything else that needs to come before council this evening? Diane, I know you had something you wanted to mention.
Just want to say thank you to Public Works Electric Department, and it may be some other departments, Mayor, I'm not sure, but anyway, downtown, our city looks really pretty, not just downtown, all the way to the interstate, and thank you so much. I mean, it makes a lot of difference. It means a lot to a lot of people. Thank you.
I've had occasion to knock on a lot of doors and talk with a lot of people, and the response of people to liking living in Cartersville and the quality of services is excellent. So, thanks to staff.
Thank you, Liz. I will tell you that tomorrow night, we've, we covered recreation, and certainly that strong recreation program feeds what's a, a high school that excels in a number of different places. Tomorrow night, the high school will be having, they'll be playing at home. It'll be senior night, and they'll be playing for region championship, and the school and the football team, everybody announced they're going to have a blackout at Wyman Stadium tomorrow night, so we'll just say in the city of Carters tomorrow, everybody wear black. And Electric Department, we do not want a blackout, but keep the lights on, and everybody will wear black, and if the lights are on, we'll be able to see everybody, so I just want to wish them well tomorrow evening as well. Anything else that needs to come before council? Sarah, want to take a motion to adjourn?
Some.
Adjourn. Thank you.